I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting on Monday, November 7th, at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in the Harvey Hearing Room. And this meeting is being televised live. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Present.
Mr. LaTieri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yep.
Ms. Woe?
Present.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, I'm here. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Martucci, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am now going to open up the meeting for public comment. I am going to ask that people restrain themselves to three minutes of public comment and that we be respectful of each other and understand that this is not a time for debate or for back and forth with the committee. We are happy to hear your comment and happy to hear what you to say, but we will defer questions to be answered after. Mr. Martucci, can you time us, please? And the floor is now open for public comment if anybody would like to come to the mic. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Di Petista. I am a 10-year ESP. Before that, I was a substitute teacher. There's only three things that I want you to know, so I'll be really quick and I probably can speak for most of the other ESPs, I'm hoping. I am very loyal to Winthrop Public Schools, love Winthrop Public Schools, but it's getting harder and harder to stay here, simply because we can't afford our bills, number one. Number two, all ESPs work with all students. We have been known to come in early, stay late, help organize binders, anything we can do just to help all kids. And we put our hearts and souls into it. Number three, I have to have two part-time jobs. I work at Boston College and I work catering because I simply can't afford to only work here or only have one other part-time job. And that's all I want you to know about my situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The ESPs who have served the petition is over 900 to meet your proposal on side.
Careful.
Our petition is in favor of the ESPs.
Good evening, school committee and families watching from home. My name is Leanne Simpson. I am a paraprofessional or an ESP as we're better known for, carrying Winthrop at the ATC Cummings School. I have worked for the school system for 25 years and I have dedicated these years to nurturing, helping to mold, and teacher children. It's a privilege working with these children every day. But the money that I have sacrificed working for the school system no longer suffices due to inflation and the cost of living. My pay is $24,777 annually, after 25 years of service, is insulting compared to what other cities and towns in the area are now earning. The other paraprofessionals and I are not asking for anything more than a fair living wage that will take us above the poverty level that we are working under now. Without powers in the classroom, 504s and IEPs would not be met, and most of all, teachers would not be able to run productive classrooms. We show up every day, ready to do our jobs 100 percent. And we are asking to be able to make enough money so most of us don't have to work two or three jobs to make ends meet. The salaries right now are no longer acceptable to Winthrop ESPs, and we are asking that you do the right thing, buy your powers, and give us a fair living wage. If administrators and teachers get opportunities to remain competitive in their field, why should our ESPs stay below the poverty line while our neighbors are above? In Winthrop, we often hear about how people stay working here because of the tight-knit community we live in, and that as colleagues, we are like family. But why would you want your fellow community members and your family struggling, earning less than their peers, when you have the power to allot us a wage that we deserve? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you please hand this to Ms. Hames so that it can be entered into the record? Yes, please.
This is from Dr. Christopher Beckfold. To the Winthrop School Committee, my name is Dr. Christopher Beckfold. I'm a history teacher at Winthrop Middle School. During my nine years of service to Winthrop Public Schools, I've seen how vital ESPs are to our schools. However, they are not being compensated as such. Every day, our ESPs work with hand to reach students in addition to their caseload with students with special needs. I've seen them work with small groups. I've seen them cover entire classrooms when our buildings is short of substitutes. There is no task they will not undertake or child they will not help. It is incomprehensible to me why a school committee would not assent to the terms for which they are asking. At the very least, our ESPs deserve a fair wage. About six years ago, the Winthrop Public Schools and the school committee were concerned about teacher retention due to the high turnover. To fix this, all parties agreed to adjust the pay scale so it would become more competitive and consequently would encourage more teachers to stay in the district. The same predicament faces Winthrop now regarding ESPs. Because the wages are not enticing enough, Winthrop Public Schools will eventually face a more dire ESP shortage once many of our current ESPs retire. It is already difficult to meet special education mandates with limited number of ESPs that are currently working at Winthrop Middle School. Imagine what a future might bring if there were even fewer ESPs to provide special education. You have a duty to the Winthrop children's and by default, it's ESPs and educators. Meeting ESP bargaining units' needs will help our ESPs better serve our students. Sincerely, Christopher H. Beckfold, Ph.D. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having this opportunity for me to share this information. This letter was written by Mrs. De Bees, one of our kindergarten teachers, along with the other teachers that were with her today. We're very concerned about our ESPs and we value them hugely. The work that they do, as you have just heard, is beyond what people do on a daily basis, working with children in other areas. So the letter is stated, "I am writing on behalf of the educational support personnel staff for the Winthrop Public Schools. Day in and day out, ESPs go above and beyond to make our classrooms run successfully. In general education classrooms, ESPs are more than support staff. They are co-teachers, especially at the Gorman Fort Banks. With the high expectations from the Department of Education, the class sizes that we face, and the way students have evolved as a result of COVID-19, elementary classrooms look very different than they did 10 years ago. Our jobs simply could not be accomplished without the support of ESPs. ESPs in this particular setting run small groups offering differentiated instruction for our youngest learners. They assist with behavior management, support students in five specials which consist of computers, art, gym, music, and science, supervise students on the playground, and handle clerical responsibilities on a daily basis. When a classroom teacher is out, there is a shortage of substitute teachers, which is a very real thing at this point in time. The ESPs step up and take over classrooms, not only the classrooms they are assigned to, but classrooms throughout the school. For example, when the art teacher needed to take a day off, there was no sub available at that time, and ESP stepped up, worked in the art room that day. They volunteered to do it, and they didn't complain about it. In the special education setting, ESPs are running behavior trials, assisting with toileting students who are required to support in that area. Many ESPs are on the receiving end of some outbursts in actions. That can be a little bit painful. Support staff has been seen jumping over fences to keep students from running off the playground, and they always keep their students' safety in mind. ESPs are also assisting with behavior management in these classrooms and are responsible for integrating students into general education settings and supporting them within that classroom. There are so many more responsibilities that these staff members take on, day in and day out. They do it without complaint and with a smile on their face. Students do not know the background, the fact that these critical staff members are feeling underappreciated and undervalued. ESPs are taking on many of the same responsibilities as classroom teachers, with the exception of report cards, grading, and parent-teacher conferences. Why is their salary not reflective of this? Their salary is not even close to a living wage. Let's step up and show our ESPs how valuable they truly are to our whole community and our students and give them a respectable wage. And I have to say for myself, in the over 13 years I've been a teacher and the nine years before that as an ESP, that wage level hasn't changed very much, and that's a disgrace. Winthrop should be proud. They should show the value and the importance of our ESPs. Our children deserve this special skills, and you need to support their living wages. Thank you."
Hi, I'm just reading this on behalf of a parent that couldn't be here tonight. "To the members of the Winthrop School Committee, I am writing this letter in encouragement of our school's education support professionals, ESPs, in their fight for a contract in our community. The ESPs in our schools are the backbone for our teachers and students with special needs. I know this firsthand as a mother of a six-year-old twins who are in the ASD program at the Gorman Fort Banks School. In 2019, my children first attended the Fort Banks in the full-time preschool program. Our world flipped upside down in 2020 with the shutdown due to COVID-19. This was a challenging time for all parents of young children, but especially those with children on the autism spectrum. These children rely on a routine with familiar faces, and that was quickly changed. Once classes went remote, it was the teachers and the ESPs who supported my children and family. They were patient during Zooms and became Brady and Hannah's biggest cheerleaders. They sang the loudest during boarding greetings and offered words of encouragement to my husband and I as we struggled with teaching our children out of our own home. The ESPs supported my children's teachers as they made their lesson plans come to life. When our children went back to school, ESPs were the ones that welcomed them with open arms and guided them as they wore face masks, a challenge for any child with sensory concerns. They continued the school year into the summer program and became the familiar face in security that our children needed. Seeing their face every day is a relief to me as I struggle every day with concerns of my children. They love our children and they are the voice to students who do not have one. ESPs are imperative in our children's lives and in our school system. They need our full support and those of our school committee so they can continue to help our children thrive. I trust that the Winthrop School Committee will show their full support for the young people in our community with special needs by voting yes and giving our ESPs the right to a contract. After all the ESPs have done for our children, this letter is only a small glimpse of our appreciation for their hard work and dedication. Thank you for your consideration. Erin E. Tarpe."
Good evening. My name is Stacy Lamille, and I'm reading a letter on behalf of the special ed teachers at Fort Banks. Dear school committee, the preschool special education staff is writing in support of increased wages for the incredibly hard-working ESPs in our district. Our classrooms would not be able to function efficiently or safely without the constant support of these dedicated professionals, people who we consider to be our co-teachers. ESPs play such an important role in not only the academic growth of our special education students, but also share the enormous responsibility to keep these students safe, many who are diagnosed with autism or have complex medical needs. We wanted to give you a better idea of some daily tasks assumed by ESPs in our preschool program. The following list details some, but is not inclusive of all. Tasks and responsibilities to support our most vulnerable students. Working with students in a small group or one-on-one setting to ensure comprehension of academic tasks. Helping to prepare learning activities. Utilizing visuals to support nonverbal students' learning and overall communication skills. Keeping the classroom organized and tidy. Deescalating and supporting challenging behaviors by providing behavioral redirections. Helping students walk and safely navigate the school building, classroom, and playground. Teaching students necessary safety awareness skills. Feeding students who are not able to do so themselves. Changing diapers and toilet draining. Facilitate teaching vital social skills. Supporting students sitting on the rug or in a seat so they may safely attend to and fully participate in whole group lessons. ABA training to run essential trial-based academic attention and social objectives written on students' IEPs. Building strong relationships with families. Provide hand-over-hand assistance with writing corresponding hand movements to songs that build language and vocabulary and sign language to communicate. All of the support that the ESPs provide on a daily basis allows us to teach our lessons effectively. These integral staff members are specially trained and have acquired the necessary skills required to teach our student population. The ESPs have been ALIS certified and many have participated in further specialized training, such as CPR and ABA to support our students with autism. Most of the ESPs are highly educated and have earned college degrees. They love what they do and are here only for their love of teaching and the children that they care for daily. Many leave our classrooms and go to work, a second job, in order to make ends meet and support their own families. It would be tragic if we lost trained ESPs to a higher-paying district and had to replace them with staff who are underqualified and untrained. Please consider compensating these outstanding professionals fairly and appropriately. Sincerely, the special education preschool teachers, Sarah O'Brien, Jessica Hurley, Andrea Sullivan, Lauren Capasso, Lauren Pinto, and Taylor Monson."
Thank you.
I am reading this on behalf of the special education teacher I work with at the Gorman Fort Banks. Dear members of the school committee, in the uncertain and ever-changing world of special education, one thing remains consistent, the need and importance of quality ESPs. As a special education teacher, my job would be impossible without the ESPs that work in my classroom. My caseload of students present a wide array of cognitive, social, and developmental levels. While I differentiate the daily work assignments based on each student's IEP and skill level, I rely on my ESPs to help implement all of these plans and activities. They work as an extension of myself, acting as extra sets of teacher's hands which are vital to the learning growth and safety of the students in our class. To those that compare ESPs to babysitters, I invite them to spend even an hour in my classroom to see the level of work and skill the job truly requires. ESPs deserve much more than they currently make, and the fact that they are only asking for a living wage goes to show the level of humility with which they conduct themselves on a daily basis. It also shows the lack of respect and support for ESPs in this district and others as they are hoping only for a living wage and not the full value of their work. ESPs are essential to any school community as any of its other members. Our students would not get the level of education and support they needed if not for these vital members. It saddens me when while asking for a reasonable pay increase, which is comparable to the rates paid in other districts, the bargaining team was met with what can barely be considered an offer at all, let alone a reasonable one. Quality wages will only lead to more qualified ESPs and ESP applicants. If you truly have the best entrance of the students of Winthrop in mind, you would understand the need for ESPs who feel valued and appreciated, and a fair wage is the best way for the district to show that at large. Regards, Sarah Pellerin, Special Education Teacher, GSP."
I'm Kristin Reynolds. I'm a third-grade teacher at the Cummings School and the president of the WTA. I'm just here to support all of our support staff, our ESPs, our nurses, and our secretaries, who work so hard tirelessly all day long to support our students. And we wouldn't be able to have morning programs like morning gym, morning computers, without those staff members, as well as supporting our special education staff, our EL staff, our students that are sick and lonely and need help from a nurse or a secretary, and then our secretaries and our nurses that support our teachers and our administrators every day. So on behalf of the Cummings School teachers I speak, but also on behalf of the whole WTA, I ask for your support to settle fair contracts for all three bargaining units.
Any further comment? Yes.
Super, super brief. Topic change. You guys are doing great. I just wanted to say, just, there's been a recent controversy over a book that's in, might be a first-grade classroom in the Gorman Fort Banks School. And I just wanted to say, I and other community members that I've heard from really appreciate the response from the assistant principal, Michelle Tucker. Danielle Tucker, sorry. Yeah, that was a great response. And I really hope it's something that all of you understand and a sentiment you can get behind. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, sure. Suzanne Martucci.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you.
It's okay to switch to that topic as well. I'm Suzanne Hitchcock-Bryan. I live in Precinct 3. I'm a retired nurse. I'm a former nursery school teacher. I'm a former high school theater teacher. My daughter is a pediatric nurse practitioner. I come to support all kids in Winthrop, all kids, including those with gender dysmorphia, dysphoria, sorry. As you well know, unsupported kids with gender dysphoria can experience significant distress, including anxiety and depression, which can eventually lead to substance abuse and self-harm. It is crucial to offer support to kids who feel a conflict between what they were assigned at birth and the gender to which they currently identify. And we know gender identification starts quite early in kids. And just a reminder, gender identification has absolutely nothing to do with sexual orientation. Having access to this book, which is a great book, is one piece of alleviating the distress these kids might experience. My seven-year-old grandson read this book. His report, it's good. It's about a sister who wants to be a brother. End of story.
Hi, I'm Walter Connolly. I'm from Precinct 1. I'm the Episcopal priest at St. John's Episcopal Church. I'm also a member of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. I'm also a gay man and a Christian. And as a Christian, I stand on a fundamental principle that God's glory is the human person fully alive. And I stand with those of any stripe, age, gender, whatever, who strive to remove barriers so that all people can be fully alive. However, as a gay man, I would have to disagree with the last statement. There is in fact a connection between sexual orientation and gender. It's not rigid, but it's there. And as a gay man, I know that I had questions about my own gender, as it's described today. But I'm glad that I was allowed to develop with support, and I'm grateful that I had a family that supported me. It could have been better, believe me. But my concern is that we go down a path that locks people to a foregone conclusion. There's been a lot of recent studies in Europe that have put a halt to a lot of the affirming gender care in preference for developmental care, where we attend to the needs at each developmental stage without going down a set route, allowing people to grow and explore. And that's what I'm concerned about, that if we go down this path with this book, I read it and I bought it, I was gonna go on hearsay, and it's pretty innocuous on the surface, but it encapsulates a lot of the worst gender stereotypes, misogynistic stereotypes. And if the feminist movement did anything, I thought it would have taken apart some of those. So, fine, have the book. Let it generate discussions. Generate discussions, not as a foregone conclusion. There are other books out there. I've actually brought one. You can use that as well. My Body Is Me. It's a positive image that we don't have to worry about our body. Thank you, Courtney.
Hi, my name is John DeRoss and I'm from Precinct 6. I'm a member of the licensing board of Winthrop, and I'm a resident for four years. So a newbie, I think, compared to a lot of people in Winthrop. First of all, I too want to speak on the topic of the book, but before I do, having worked in corporate America for 30 years and having had a former partner when I was younger as a special ed teacher, I just want to support everything you guys do. We are hurting in corporate America for talent that we need right now, and that starts with education. So fully support everything you guys do. And I appreciate the comments that just came, the two comments before, and you're about to see diversity of opinion within the gay community. I'm also gay, and I grew up in a small town in Maine, Waterville, Maine, if you may be familiar with it, the home of Colby College. I'm originally from Worcester, but I did grow up in Maine. When I started to get an inkling that I might be different as a kid, that was right around late middle school, early high school. And when I looked around Waterville, we were a town about the size of Winthrop, roughly the same population, even though in Maine we were the fifth-largest town in Maine. But as I looked around at my fellow students, teachers, people in the community, I didn't know a single gay person, not one. So when I heard about the book, and I too read it, and if you haven't read it, it's gonna take three minutes of your life. You really should read it. I thought about what it was like for me to grow up alone. And outwardly, when I was in high school, I played hockey. I was the class president my senior year, did some theater outwardly, had a very positive life. Inwardly, I was tormented. I was alone. I went to parties with the cool kids, and at night, I'd be sitting next to a girl who wanted to kiss me, and I didn't want to kiss her. And finally, my senior year, I had the courage to say, she was a friend of mine too, and I just said, can we just hang out? And she was wonderful to me. And that one experience gave me the courage to just kind of tell my truth. I have a very close childhood friend that I've known since we were six. We were in second grade together. Her name is Paula in Arlington. She has two kids. Her younger kid, Zach, as he grew up, is now Veronica. Her younger kid, Zach, as he grew up, is now Veronica. Came out as trans, Veronica is, I believe, in a senior this year. So I just want you to know, and you probably already do as educators, I too was an educator, I have a master's in higher ed administration, literally, kids' life is in your hands. Transgender kids are seven and a half times more likely to commit suicide than other kids. To the point the pastor made just a minute ago, it's not about foregone conclusions. There's a big decision to be made as kids get older, what to do with that, but the last thing you want to do is take away a book that encourages the discussion. Because parenting is tough, it's not easy. I'm watching my brother with my 16-month-old nephew right now, it's not easy. If you have books like this that just help the conversation to whatever conclusion, that's incredibly important. If you look at polls around book banning-
I'm sorry, can you wrap up, please?
I will.
Thank you.
If you look at polls nationally around book banning, no matter what your political affiliation, over 70% of the country absolutely opposes book banning. It's the last thing you want to do. And if you haven't read it, read it, it's worth it, and you're gonna help save kids' lives. Thank you very much.
Is there any other comment? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. We are opening up now for our delegates and visitors. We have presentations to be made on the MCAS.
We do from our principals and from our executive director, assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction accountability, and a whole bunch of other things. So I can see that folks are preparing to leave, so if anyone would like to step out, feel free, we can give about a minute maybe, just to let folks clear out so that we can have a quiet room for our presentations. Laura, do you need your computer up there?
Nope.
Oh, you have your clicker. She's ready. She is ready.
Hi.
Hi. Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight to make a presentation.
Thank you. So we want to share with you the MCAS data. I want to preface this by the fact that my counterparts across the state met with Rob Curtin from the Department of Education, we went through the data that I'm gonna share with you right now, which is some overall state data, to give you a little snapshot before each of the principals goes in to talk a little bit more about the specifics from their buildings. And I do want to start by saying that, you know, they're telling us that 2022 is now the new baseline. However, you have to take that with a grain of salt, to understand that we don't expect to see the same jumps in recovery as we might have seen in some areas this year to next year, kind of thing, that it's a new baseline, but it's a different baseline, and it shouldn't be compared to where we were pre-pandemic. Just keep that in mind as you're looking through the data. Just a little bit of background, so that you can understand, the last full administration of both, at all grades, was in 2019. No testing was done during 2020. 2021, we did a half test that was administered in grades three through eight. I'm sorry, yeah. The half test was administered, and grade 10 had the full test. But 2022 was the first full test administered, so our 10th graders this past year had not taken a standardized MCAS since 7th grade. So it was, you know, it's not just what was going on in the data, it was everything that's changed in the meantime as well. So mixed results. We know that the math scores actually increased a slight bit in 2022 across the state, English took the biggest dip, and science actually increased slightly. But again, when we compare them to pre-pandemic levels, we have to consider the full learning loss that we're talking about, and some of the data will show you a line that better for you. In ELA, the two main focus areas for improvement are the impact for the lower writing scores across all levels, and the early literacy challenges. And student absenteeism was a huge factor and remains a huge factor even now. The one thing, you know, that's obvious as well in regard to writing is when you're online, other than really some of the older students who could hand in assignments via Google Classroom and such, it was very difficult for young children to do writing that could be shared with their teachers, because they didn't have their letter formations yet, they didn't have sentence structure or spelling yet, so most of their classroom work via Zoom was conversation. So this gives you an idea of the English scores by grade, so this is a variable of the losses across grades three through seven. And you can see, if you look in the first column where it shows you 2019 to 2021, that's the percentage of students that's meeting and exceeding in ELA. So you see each grade had quite a dip from 2019 to 2021. Then, from 21 to 22, again, grades three through seven still saw large dips. When you get to 8th grade, there was a one percentage point increase, showing slight, very slight recovery, but going in the right direction. And again, we're noticing that for the students at the upper levels who have the foundational skills, we're starting to see that recovery. We're still looking for more positive signs with the younger students who didn't have the foundational skills, you know, it's much more difficult to fill those gaps. This shows you kind of a snapshot to show you, 3rd through 5th grade was negative four percentage points from 19 to 21, and negative eight from 21 to 22. But yet, you see, we went up four percentage points from negative seven to negative three. I know it looks funny saying we went up, but four percentage point difference in the right direction, showing there is some recovery there. So we know it's happening, we just know, and this is what they're saying about the 2022, using this new baseline, to, you know, you have to take into consideration that this is still really recovery mode as we go forward in what we're seeing. In ELA, the test contains a required essay, and the 2022 writing results declined significantly, and this is across the state. So a score of zero points increased from 19% in 2019 to 31% in 2022. And again, you know, three through five, that was the largest group that struggled with writing. The average point score per essay decreased in grades three through eight with larger decreases in grades three through five. This shows you now math, now I said we increased somewhat, but you'll see that everyone in 2019 to 2021, from 3rd grade through 6th grade, went from 48, 49, or 50, 52, down to 33% of students meeting and exceeding. But from 2021 to 2022, each one climbed. And you see the change that circled in the green on the right, up eight percentage points in 3rd grade, up nine percentage points in 4th grade, smaller but still up three in 5th grade, and then up nine again in 6th grade. They're all pluses in that area in 3rd through 8th grade, some greater than others. So again, we're seeing there's some recovery here, it's not, you know, it's not, you know, everything we want it to be, obviously, but at least we're seeing that it's moving in the right direction. Small recovery again in grades five and eight in science, one percentage point up, but moving in the right direction. In science, we all know that, you know, ELA and math were the focus primarily during COVID. You know, we were teaching everything, but the devotion of time, because we had shortened days when students were online, went to ELA and math, so the fact that science is even moving in that direction is a positive right now. So we're hoping and expecting to see these gains as we move forward. The absenteeism, I really have to say that this is where we really need to ask for parents' support and assistance in this. Our accountability, and it's not really, I mean, the big issue is about what it's doing to our students when they're absent, but our accountability is based on, it's 180 school days. If you are out of school for 18 days in a school year, you are considered chronically absent, 10% of the school year. So 18% of all students missed 18-plus days in 2021, and in 2020, sorry, 28% missed 18-plus days in 2022. It only got worse. You know, the stat up there that says 1.78 days of missed school because of positive COVID-19 cases in 2022. Those numbers were what Superintendent Howard had to keep turning into the commissioner's office every time we had students who tested positive. And that does not include staff absences, and it doesn't include anybody who was out for close contacts, it's only if they were confirmed cases that she and our school nurses and Meredith Hurley would keep track of for the state. So the numbers are just astronomical. This can just show you a little comparison. On the left side, you're looking at, in the blue bar, chronically absent students who met or exceeded ELA MCAS in, over this past year. And you see it's 29% of kids who are considered chronically absent versus 54% of students who did not have absentee problems and absentee issues. And in 2022, it went from 25% to 46%, right? So, and the same thing in math, you can just see the discrepancy, 22% to 51% meeting and exceeding expectations based on their attendance alone. There's no other factors in here except whether they were considered chronically absent. So this is why I say we really need the help of parents to understand, you know, how important it is that we get the kids to come into school whenever possible. Obviously, we don't want them when they're sick and, you know, not feeling up to par, but for any other reason, please try and get them in here. So the student growth model, because we have the data again, last year when I talked to you, we weren't looking at student growth data because we hadn't tested since 2019, and the validity wasn't there. Now the validity is back, so they've gone back to using the old standard for understanding the means that are applicable. So 1 to 19 is considered very low growth, you can read the chart here, but 40 to 59 is typical growth, which is where most of our schools fall, is within the typical growth range, and we've had some different groups that have been very close to the high growth or borderline. And this is more that we're continuing to look at, and all the schools have been looking at, the principals with their teams, at driving where the interventions need to be, driving what we can put in place, what kind of programs we can put in place for after-school or anything like that going forward to help address more of these needs. And we're gonna go through the different schools, so I am going to turn it over. Unless anybody has any questions for me, I want to just show you first, but if you want to wait to the end, yes.
Sorry, go ahead. In regards to the overall MCAS scores for each of the categories, how are our students mapping out against the average state, the state, you know, the state average?
Yeah, so we're very close or higher than a lot, but all the principals have that in each of their schools. We thought it would be easier for them to break it down building by building for you, so that would be answered.
And the data that you showed us was Winthrop, up here.
The data, that data is the state. That is the percentage-
All that you showed us was state.
State. And the principals are gonna take you through each individual school in there.
I'll wait then for my other question.
And if there's anything else at the end, I'm happy to answer anything back. But I'm now gonna turn it over to Principal Pearson.
Real quick question, though, on the chronically absent students, are we also tracking with those percentages, like 28% of our kids?
Would you say, we're pretty close. Pretty, everything, I mean, the state surprisingly is very close across the board this year. I mean, and I don't know if it's because kids have been home so much over the last few years, that it doesn't seem as much of an issue for parents sometimes to keep them home, but we're definitely seeing in the data that it's becoming more and more of an issue.
But I think the parameter is too around allowing kids to come to school. So if you think about last year, although we had our kids back in school, there were still rules around that, which were being encouraged by the state's Department of Public Health. If your child has any of the following symptoms, you know, you need to stay home. And so at other times, we would have sent our sneezy, you know, congested, headachey kid, you know, to school with a little bit of Italian on, and said, you know, step it up and let's go. And last year, not so much. And so now I think we're seeing parents push that again, let's go, let's get to school, let's step it up, let's go. And now we're facing the flu, just for general information. The flu has miraculously returned, we didn't have it before, now it's decided to come back, and we had a whole host of kids out today in one school building. Not enough to say we have a concern about the building, but enough to really speak to, so we're kind of at all over the map, if you get it, in terms of our kids, and who's supposed to go to school, who's not, who's supposed to stay home, who's not. But I think we're getting more used to now getting our kids back in schools.
And I think it may take us getting through this school year again and towards the end to be able to start to see things level off, like Superintendent Howard said, you know, right now you don't want to send your kid to school if there's a chance that they could infect somebody else with some other, what be it COVID or flu or anything like that, and you just don't want to put your child or yourself in that position. So we understand that, but I do think statewide it's gonna take us getting through this year again to see the next steps, you know, hopefully see the changes. So I'm gonna turn it over-
That data is on our school improvement fence too, but absenteeism grids on the back, and those are all on the website.
Right. And Ms. Pearson's gonna start next, and obviously Ms. Pearson doesn't have the MCAS data, but she has all of her data bringing us up until the first test. Ms. Pearson, I will turn it over to you. Clicker is yours. All you do is hit that button to go to your next slide.
That's what we're doing.
Thanks, everybody, nice of you to have me here, happy to be here too. So I just want to say, as we transition from Ms. Galvin's presentation to mine, it's one thing to think about the number of absences we've had, right? We come to the table, we know it's an automatic five days, and so it is what it is, except that what's different at our level is it's the quality of instruction that's really missing. This is the place where foundational skills are established, and to teach foundational skills in students at our grade level, it has to be done in person. If I'm wearing a mask and I'm saying an M versus an N, you need to understand my tongue's gonna go to a different place, and I can't show you that. And so that is going to compromise the baseline skills that these students have as they continue to matriculate. And so if they're losing these baseline skills, these opportunities because of the caliber of instruction we've been able to afford, that means when they get over to the coming school, Mrs. O'Leary has to alert her teachers that you think you're teaching 3rd grade skills, but you're not, you're really getting a 2nd grade student in front of you. Sometimes in 3rd grade, they're not even getting a 2nd grade learner's profile in front of them. What I've done tonight is what I've done in the past, and I've broken down our discrete skills, and we do have data to show you that. So you can see on the left-hand side, we're looking at last year's students, and on the right-hand side, you're looking at this year's students. So for the benefit of those folks that can't see it as clearly at home, 45% of 2nd grade students show whole word reading. And whole word reading is when we're working with blending and reading words, okay? We're doing both of those skills together, as compared to 35% of the students in 21. I think the benefit of this slide is it really gives you a chance to take a look at how our new curriculum programs are working for us. The idea that we've gone up 10% in our ability to have students blend and read words is a total shout-out to Hegarty and Letterland. Those of you that have students in my building know exactly what Hegarty and Letterland is, it's referred to frequently. We thank Ms. Galvin for bringing those programs to us, they really help us overcome some of those challenges that I was talking to you about as far as our instruction is concerned. So if we keep this trajectory going at 10% of an increase, we actually don't come too far away from where we were pre-COVID, which was 62% of our students. This is very interesting data, because when you look at the profile of how high school students are performing, we totally rock ELA. We'll get to that in a minute. The next slides are talking to you about ORF, which is oral reading fluency. You can see that 46% of our students demonstrate oral reading fluency, and that's a rate in accuracy, you can't have accuracy though, right? If you can't see us without RMS and know what we're really saying and what sounds those letters are making, and that's compared to 42% of the 2nd grade students in 2021. Why the dip, you say? Well, I think probably part of the dip has to do with the history of their learning, and it also has to do with the very recent- and it also has to do with a very recent, very dramatic influx of students that don't speak our language. Um, this year's second grade students, the one that we're talking about right now, they had kindergarten as remote with some coming in hybrid in January, many of them choosing not to return in January. When they did come in, in January in a hybrid model, masks all the way. In first grade, they had masks all the way until March. That was just last year, all the way until March. Um, and then phonological awareness, phonics and oral reading instruction obviously was all compromised because of that. And here we have our learners in front of us now. And it's not that bad that the oral reading fluency is almost fifty percent. Um, I also wanted to note that last year in second grade only, we had twenty one English language learners. In this year, we have twenty seven English language learners. One percent. That's really not bad with that kind of a jump. And just to put everything into perspective, because this will matter as we go down the road. We went from sixty eight students last year as English language learners to eighty seven students this year. That wow is totally it. It's wow, underline, bold, caps. It really is. Also remember, last year we were operating with two EL teachers and this year we're grateful to have three. So this is, this is definitely something that you wanna keep on your radar going forward. Because when you have students that haven't had high quality instruction, not from our teachers, it's always high quality in that regard. But because of the style of instruction we were able to afford them, you take a look at that big, big jump in EL students, one percent. It's almost something of, it's almost something to celebrate. This is a little bit tricky because this is really something that we only can measure honestly in our second grade students. So what you'll see in this slide is that we've got thirty two percent of our students that are meeting or exceeding expectations in reading comprehension as opposed to thirty four percent of our students last year. It's alarming because that means that sixty eight percent of our students are still below benchmark. Comprehension, that is huge. I mean, that's a big part of MCAS, right? You don't have comprehension, how do you complete the writing prompt? And it goes on and on. The problem we have with that is that comprehension, again, needs explicit instruction. You say, well, how do you teach students to understand what they're reading? Well, you think about taking a look at the cover. You're predicting whether it's fiction or it's nonfiction. Do you know how to use a graphic organizer? Do you know how to identify a setting? Can you figure out what the plot is? Can you figure out if this storyline has a problem and a solution? So there are very, very specific skills that we need to teach. We also know that families have a lot going on in their lives and many of them haven't been well and also battling COVID relatives that have had COVID. So it's questionable to realize how much support these students have been given at home to help with those comprehension strategies. It's also questionable to know how many families really do have literacy-rich environments. I don't know what the caliber of talk is in their homes. Talking is another method of comprehension that we're practicing. We don't know what the caliber of texts are that these students are afforded. Are they all, I don't even wanna say any of the commercial names because I don't want families to think I'm endorsing it. But are they all Disney books? Are they all Ninja Turtles? I mean, you know, what are we giving our students to read at home? So um again, we've got some real, real challenges in the areas of comprehension. Not only because the lack of exposure that students have had, but because of the caliber of instruction, unfortunately, that we were reduced to for the last essentially three years. All right, I can explain this. This is really upsetting. Because there really has been no growth here. There's, you can see that for yourself. So um what I can tell you though, and this is why I say I can explain it. In our last typical year, and we're gonna use two thousand nineteen as being that typical year, only eighteen percent of our students were meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. And yes, we were using the same program. So we know that this accurate, that this data is accurate. I'm gonna tell you what I think this is. In ELA, we have an RTI model. I think the majority of the committee is familiar with the RTI model and the committee members that were not here when it was explained thankfully have real life experience with the RTI model. So essentially, for the public that doesn't know, the RTI model is when we're taking small groups of students, they have comparable deficiencies. We teach them in a small group format, so it gives students an awful lot of time to practice skills and to reinforce learning. We don't have an RTI model in math and it's huge. Students learn best at our level in small group settings. Small group settings give them that experience and the opportunity for practice, not the experience, I'm sorry, the opportunities for practice that I was just explaining to you. So that is the quick fix on that. Speaking of quick fixes, these are the fixes that we spoke to you about last year that are still in place. Um, I don't know if you folks want me to race through this um and just have you read it silently or for the benefit of the community, I'm happy to do it either way. I don't wanna insult your intelligence and waste your time, so I'm gonna ask. Direction, someone?
If you can give us an overview, that'd be great.
Okay, an overview, okay. Um, opportunities for small group instruction is what we're saying. And so I just spoke about that, we don't have to go too far with that. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to Ms. Polo, many of you know her, and uh Ms. McKenna, and many of you know her. Um, they are two retired teachers that have come back. They provide small group instruction for limited periods of time in certain classrooms and grade levels, and that's uh Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. We also have um reading specialists uh in our building. That is an unbelievably great team. Unfortunately, because we have so many students in need, their services are confined to first grade and second grade. That decision was made for, was made for some of the reasons that you've heard tonight. The ESPs are co-teachers in those classrooms, they pick up a large part of instruction in kindergarten. Um, we're increasing the frequency of the informal assessments and that's going to help us assess learning. And we'll be assessing the learning not for the purpose of grading, but for adjusting our instruction. We weren't able to do that during the times of COVID. We're progress monitoring our students who are well below grade level on a regular basis. And so that helps us when we get to SSTs and we're planning our interventions. We have regularly scheduled horizontal grade level planning time, which is being used to group students of comparable skill deficits. And with that, we employ a walk to learn model. What's a walk to learn model? It literally is taking the students that have the same needs in Mr. Luteri's class as in Ms. Leonard's class. We put those students together and we send them over to Ms. Powell's class because she really has a concentration of those students and those students are going to learn there. How's Ms. Powell gonna manage things? She's going to take her other students that have either deficiencies or super skills and moving them into Ms. Barry's class. In the meantime, Ms. Barry's moving her students potentially into one of your classes. Possibly Ms. Petrie's gonna move one into Ms. Barry's class, and I think you guys get it. Mr. Martucci, you're accustomed to figuring things out on your own, so we didn't bother to carry you. Okay, all right, there you go. Um, so at any event, that's essentially how we do that with um the frequent progress monitoring. And then improving the capacity to deliver instruction. Those new programs that I mentioned to you, Hegarty and Letterland, spent all of last year giving teachers professional development in that area. And so it really is making a big difference. But as you can see, this is primarily focused on ELA because that's where we've got the resources. If I had a Ms. Polo and a Ms. McKenna in math, my world would be very different on that particular score anyway. All right, here we go. This is it. So this year, we also added a new reading assessment. Uh, this reading assessment is a curriculum-based measure, so these are really good. Because what they do is they're taking a look at the sub-skills in our students. So we really can identify where those areas are. Again, it's only in reading. Uh, we also, per the state's directive, uh added a dyslexia screening protocol. And it's good because, I mean, that isn't something that we generally would have done at all grade levels. So it's helpful for us to be having that, I'm glad that's going on. Uh, we have the formal uh data team meetings as recommended by Desi and that is focused exclusively on ELA, the dyslexia guidelines as well. Um, I mentioned that we had added the EL teacher, so we're servicing more students. And fortunately, we're actually able to comply with mandated services and we haven't been able to do that for a while either. Uh, we're grateful to have parents coming back into the building. They're, they're huge. Anytime we have those volunteers, we're most appreciative and that will make a difference. Um, we just started to uh provide curriculum supports in our newsletters and so families have all the tools they need. They don't have to look at Class Dojo all the time. They've got a monthly summary that is written by the teachers. The teachers are going to a lot of trouble to get the details of information out there to families. We're really hoping that families are gonna be able to help us out and we'll be able to see some student growth in that regard. Um, the SST process, that is something that di- that the district is working on uh in a K to twelve fashion, that's student support teams. Um, but they're not always as robust as they should be. Teachers should really be leaving with a very solid toolkit that is diverse in terms of what it's offering for students, depending on what their needs are. Um, there's work to be done with that and I'm looking forward to being a big part of that process. Very, very sorely needed. I also wanted to just throw in a couple of teacher goals here so that you could see that our teacher goals really do align to the needs of the district. So you can see that the first teacher goal is an example from the second grade team that we're going to administer the, the CBMs, the curriculum-based measures in oral reading. Saw oral reading, not very good. Um, and we're gonna be using that da- that data to revise our instruction. So that's a teacher goal in second grade and it actually gives you the percentage of increase that they're looking for. By the end of um first grade this year, the teachers are gonna uh have participated in the administration of a phonics survey. The phonics survey is probably the most crucial element of instruction in reading in first grade. And they also have included how much they should be moving up, which is a whole tier. A tier, um, a tier covers essentially all of the skills within that content. And that completes it. Yes, it's short on math. Yes, it's short on math. I need an interventionist. It's going to be a very, very high priority for us. And I'm ready for questions.
Do you think that the um, there's a correlation to the lower comprehension score um impacting the math scores as well?
Yeah, definitely, especially in second grade.
Yeah.
Because in second grade, it's not laid out for you. I mean, that's where the word problems are coming in. So I think if you were to take a look at our second grade students, conceptually, they can define these skills for you. They could explain to you that subtraction makes a number smaller, addition makes some, an amount greater. They can do all of that. It's not the conceptual knowledge that we're having a hard time with, it's actually implementing the operations. So yeah, there's no question about that. I definitely think that comprehension is big. Tons of word problems in second grade, it's a huge shift. Don't you think?
Yes, Ms. Polo.
Um, thank you for, this is very helpful, I think. It's really um a nice report. I've always been, and I'm gonna say this to all of you, I'm not happy with test scores in Winthrop across the board. I'm not really happy. I wasn't happy before COVID, so I'm, no, not happy at all. But I under- I, I get it. I understand some of the problems that we're facing. I understand we're facing weaknesses in math. We've been facing this for the four years I've, I've been around. Um, I, I mean, we don't see ranges usually in scores. I mean, we see averages mostly, right? That usually, I mean, you see them, I thought that you don't see.
I wouldn't be able to say that that's true, no, I definitely see.
You see them, I understand, but usually when it's reported out, we don't, we don't see them. So I'm wondering in, for example, in second grade, do you have, as you pointed out, in this scenario of moving kids around, where would you say you're moving most of the kids? In other words, are they, I, is there a very small group that moves up in a group? And, and a lot of kids that are moving back to first grade?
So I wouldn't be able to answer that question with specificity in terms of where we're moving them, but I can show you that we do have the data available to help guide us. So if you take a look at this data, right, which looks a lot like this data, but we know that they're measuring two different skills because we spoke about that, you can see that wherever it is that you're going to look, those students are already categorized for us. We know what the percentages are of the students that have scored well above average. And we can see that well above average scoring students changes over time. It changes from one year to another. Um, our training from Dr. Parker, as we began our RTI model, it was always the idea that we would be at an eighty-twenty split. So we would never have more than twenty percent of our students that are working in any of the three bottom categories. So you can see how those numbers, right? These students are marked according to well above average, above average, average, low average, below average, well below average. Those equate to certain grade levels. Well below average over a period of time is going to equate to an entire grade level of deficiency, if not more than that, depending on what other skills they're mastering. So that's all broken down for you. So our idea is that if you look at the fall, winter and spring data, what we wanna have happen is we wanna have those numbers get a little bit higher.
Well, I can see that that one person there is probably lonely up at, that's just well above average on the uh twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, well, that was administered in September, they're not lonely anymore. I'm here to tell you that, no, there's more than two Ms. Lopez. They have a lot of students in that grade level, chances are.
Thank you.
Okay, even though we're weak in math, chances are there's more than two.
Yes, Lane. Um, forgive me for not knowing the answer to this question. Do your parti- do your teachers participate in any UDL uh professional development?
We have. That hasn't been the focus in the last couple of years. They are familiar in backward design process, yeah. Like, I mean, that's, it's huge.
It is. And I, I personally find UDL strategies be easier to implement with math than
They are.
with language-based instruction.
It's true, it's true, yeah.
Yes, you have a question. Um, it's actually gonna be a question that I will um ask everybody to answer, which is, I understand you're here to talk about test scores um and that's one metric, right, um of learning? But I guess what I'm wondering is, are you hearing from the um teachers and uh the pe- folks on the ground? Is this data, I guess my point is, is this data consistent with what the teachers are seeing? For example, I know my daughter did these tests. It was like she had to read how many words she could read in a minute or something in September. Um, it didn't go all that well, I know this, I just had my teacher conference. I don't think that's necessarily the metric of how my daughter is, you know, was reading at that time or is reading right now. I guess, not to dispute test scores, but I'm more concerned with the question of like, what are the teachers seeing kind of on the ground?
So just to speak to that very quickly, again, that's one discrete sub-skill, one discrete sub-skill. So what the teachers are seeing in real life unfold before them is the profile of the student. And here's what they're seeing, and I hate to go down this road and you could talk three hours about it and you don't wanna do it. The social, emotional learning of these students, I can't begin to tell you how impactful it is, what COVID has done with us. They don't have sustain- sustained attention spans. They are perpetually disengaged in instruction. When they were learning remote, they were never fully present. There was a snack that was being eaten. There was a parent that was across the room. There were toys that were being thrown to them and siblings that were somewhere else. Many times, they had their cameras on and they're doing this and you can see them, they're playing a video game, but the camera's on. And the parents are in the other room working. And so I really don't wanna pass everything off on COVID because it's not. But we're the ones that develop that attention span. We're the ones that engage them. Enough parents were participating, or at least with an earshot on Zoom, to know we gave it our best. And I think that the teachers, if they were here, would say to you, the students are not the same. If you were to tease the academics out of it, they haven't learned in a small group, they haven't learned in a whole group. They've barely engaged in parallel play, barely engaged in parallel play. So their day-to-day experiences, they're just not the same, they're different people. I feel like I'm a different person since COVID. You know, you walk into places, you're feeling a little bit more reluctant. That's what the pandemic has left us with as grownups, a hearty level of skepticism in any large group, right? For our students, they just haven't, they haven't been trained. Training is a big part of what we do. For many of our kindergarten students, it is a very first stop at a formal school experience. And I'm talking about a lengthy one, not a two and a half hour program, three days a week. So, you know, I, I don't wanna answer your question indirectly, but it would be disingenuine to get up here and not make reference to that. They're, they're different kids.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you for coming in front of us. I wish um, I wish we had a bunch of data, you know, a week before a meeting that we could go through instead of saying it on uh a screen tonight. But um, couple of questions for you. So the ITI in ELA is, is very good, right? You, you like it. Why not math? Are we going to implement that into math?
I want to. I'm gonna be coming before you again and talking about long-range plans and I'm giving you a commitment, we're gonna be working on that.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of it is a financing issue, Mr. Luteri. I mean, you know, you just, you don't have funds for every. I mean, you know, you just, you don't have funds for everything.
No, I mean, personally, I'd love to see a plan that would help you to, like, what we can do to help you implement RTI for math.
All right, thanks. So the RTI model is effective because we have our specialists free for one block. So our specialists are actually teaching RTI. The use of Ms. McKenna and Ms. Polo is supplemental to that. So we essentially are having three rotations that students are getting that will consider high-quality instruction, okay? Because they are facilitated by teachers. The problem that we have with math is this year, Ms. McKenna and Ms. Polo are going to be working on math as well. They're only there for four hours a day on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Besides that, in our second grade classrooms, many teachers have risen to the challenge of implementing an RTI-ish sort of model. So they're working with small groups of needy students, and they're designing separate activities that students engage in either individually or in small groups, and they do these rotations, 20-minute rotations. So you could have a rotation that students are going to that's focused on one particular math skill. 20 minutes later, they're going to practice another math skill. In the meantime, the teacher is working with these students that need a little bit more support. That's vastly different than RTI where we actually have instructors in there. So what would be the things I'd need to overcome? Finding somebody else besides the specialist to support us in RTI instruction. Having somebody, staff that are available, to help teach our staff how to implement an RTI model when there is another staff person present. It's a lot of work, and it is going to take money, and it is going to take planning. The teachers are super motivated. They would love for that to be given to them. Right now, it's truly only the second grade teachers that have been able to make that happen, despite the fact that the first grade teachers are doing really well with it. Many of them have it as well. But going back to Ms. Leonard's question, we don't have students that have the capacity. We didn't even start RTI until October because students didn't know how to transition from one part of the classroom to the other. That's what not being in school for so long has done to them.
And I know the influx of ELL students is tough.
And we're thrilled to have them there.
No, I'm not saying that, nothing to do with that. I'm just saying it makes it very difficult with the resources we have. Now, and my other question is, on the math program, is it still GoMath that?
It's kind of like a hybrid version. We use GoMath as a resource. We use iReady as a resource. It's iReady data that you're looking at.
Wouldn't it be good to align with Cummings or the middle school or whatever, that we all should align with the same program? Would that help?
Well, we did that at the beginning when we all investigated our programs. But for what our students needed, the programs that we were looking at were too language-heavy. We can't really go with a very language-based program. That's got nothing to do with the population of students. It has to do with the skill level of students. You know, when you try and use a program, you know, that's specific to the needs of your students, and you come up against a program that's been created for a K to 12 trajectory, you've got to be willing to abandon some of those specific needs among your student population. So the teachers, we did pilot the program. We didn't just roll it out there. The teachers piloted the program. I think the one that Ms. O'Leary eventually landed on. And it was not pleasing to them. And then they piloted this, and we've chosen this one.
And not for you, just go back with what Suzanne Sropp had said earlier. This MCAS is not a perfect tool, right? But it's the only tool we have that kind of compares apples to apples, basically. Everybody's taking the same test. So it's basically all we have. And being average or state average is not what I'm striving for. I don't think it's what anybody's striving for. And, you know, but we have to take responsibility too and to see what we can do to make y'all lives easier. But, you know, I love numbers. I could talk numbers all night, but I don't want to just listen to numbers. I'd rather listen to, like you said, this is what we can do. These are quick fixes. These are fixes that are going to take time. This is going to take money. But I'd much rather see a plan than to just regurgitate numbers because I could read the numbers. But, you know, I don't want to focus on negatives, focus on positives. I just want to focus on how we could get better and what we could do to help you because you're the experts.
Thank you. But, you know, to your point, Mr. Luteri, you can't develop a plan until you know what the problem is, right? So, I mean, no, MCAS is an imperfect school. Many of the standardized tests are imperfect, and they don't really speak to, you know, to us in a very personal, therefore not a very meaningful way. But it is very good at unearthing what the real issues are. You know, it tells us where we are content-wise. One of the things that Ms. Galvin was talking about had to do with writing. Writing, we couldn't even teach our students how to grasp a pencil. So you combine that with the lack of comprehension? No, MCAS isn't a good tool. We know what the issues are. We don't need MCAS for it, but it sure does help put things in perspective. It does show us at least the commonalities. If I'm having a problem in math and the Cummings School is not having a problem in math, that's something for me to reflect on. Their teachers must be doing something really, really right that they can help recover the deficiencies that we're seeing in our data. So, I mean, I don't think that any of us are using, I mean, I can't speak for the other principals, but I know that when we had MCAS in our school, when we had third grade, MCAS is one of many tools. You know, and from our perspective, quite the least important of any of them because it's the less personal and meaningful for us. But their data matters to me. And I'm sure you're anxious to hear it, so let me get you there unless you have another question. Well, I mean, you know.
Nice transition.
That was a setup. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. O'Leary, you're up.
I have all of that.
Yeah. You've got numbers, Mr. Luteri.
I have numbers, yes. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we will be looking at some numbers now. So this is, you will notice on the top, it says current fourth grade. So these were my third graders last year who took it, who are this year currently in fourth grade. And what we have here is the ELA for the district at 42% and the state at 44% in math at 21% and the state at 44%. And looking at bigger than just this information, I had some highlights on the side that I wanted to show. So 29% of our EL and former EL students, you will be aware that once a student flaps out, we still follow them for four years. So it's important to look at that data. 29% in Winthrop were meeting or exceeding expectations versus only 23% in Massachusetts. So I think that's an important piece to share with you. Very exciting as well is 34% of our high-need students in Winthrop were meeting or exceeding expectations versus only 27% in Massachusetts. So yes, there is a dip in the information that we're sharing with you, but I think that it's important to dig a little bit deeper and look at some of those numbers. And that's what I tried to do with slides like these. So here is your, blue is your exceeding expectations. Green is meeting. Yellow is partially meeting, and red is not meeting expectations. You will see the Winthrop versus the state. I want to point out that we are the same with exceeding expectations. Both have six. I also wanted to see that our, you know, our meeting expectations is pretty much the same. But you will see that our partially-meeting expectations is definitely higher. But our not-meeting is a little bit lower. So that's that information that I kind of shared with you a minute ago. That was for ELA. Here is on math. And we did have conversations, and we will show you kind of a broad spectrum of this afterwards. But we had one student meeting expectations, exceeding expectations in math. Where the state had six, 19 versus 35. And then our largest number was partially-meeting expectations. And I think that you can see from Mrs. Pearson's data, it would make sense for our third graders, having one year with us. This would somewhat make sense for where the data is right now. And then these are the last year's fourth graders, current fifth graders. So 39 versus 38 for ELA. You can see that that's, you know, an increase. And there is the math score again, as Ms. Galvin talked about. Math overall for everyone was very difficult. Winthrop Public Schools, low-income students. Mr. Curley is going to speak a little bit about the SGP. And I know that Ms. Galvin also spoke about it, was at 51%. And if you look back, it would take me a few slides to get back to where she was. But if you look back at, here it is, here it is, here it is. You're looking for 40 to 59% of SGP is typical growth. And then more than 40% is really good growth. So looking at our specific student scores, we were very pleased to see that most of our students were making typical high growth or very high growth. And I think that is a really important piece to see here. Now, I have to go all the way back, sorry, to find the correct slide. Our high-need students had an SGP of 48% in ELA. And it's only 40% for the state. And 18% of students with disabilities were meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 15 for the state. So I wanted to pull out some of the positive based on all of the information to highlight that for you. The next is the graphs that we showed you a little while ago about, this is your ELA in grade five, the fourth grade students. And this is the math for the fifth grade students. Data to look at. I'm not going to, you know, discuss it all for you, but you can see some of the differences. And then we have the students that we have graciously sent over to Mr. Curley. These are our current sixth graders, the fifth graders that we had last year. And if you're looking at the district versus the state, our ELA was lower, but our math went up and our science was only, our science went up. So, no, our science went down, sorry. Nope, it went up. Sorry, I was looking at it backwards. I was like, wait a minute. So I think that the two most important parts that I wanted to share, looking at the highlights on this, is the second and the third bullet. 41% of our EL and former EL students meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 21% of the state. We're not talking a few points. We're talking a significant amount right there. And the next bullet, I think, is really important, is 36% of our high-need students meeting or exceeding expectations compared to only 24 in the state. The average SGP, which we spoke about, is still high, 59%. So we have more than typical growth there. And our high-need students were higher compared to the state. But I think that this is the piece, well, here is our data points again. Current sixth graders, there is your ELA. We can compare some of the numbers here, but as Ms. Luteri said, we can look at numbers, and we can share this presentation. And here is our math. And then for fifth grade specifically, you will also see our science. So you can see that we did well in science. Overall, we have 11% exceeding expectations versus the state, which is nine. We have 36, which is the same for meeting. We have 44, and we have nine versus their 18. So I think the science is an important piece as well. So I think children moving through the Gorman Fort Banks School and then coming through three years at the Cummings School as well, you see that our fifth grade scores, looking at these students over the realm of time, have really made some significant growth. So this is the piece that I think that is the most important part to talk about. When you're looking at all of the data, what we have is common planning time in the morning at the Adity Cummings. And it is 20 minutes, two days a week, one for ELA and one for math. And then we have another block called POD. And the POD is a 45-minute time each week that each one of the grade three, grade four, grade five, the specialist, the special education teachers get. We are extremely blessed to have a math coach and a reading coach. We also have a lead EL teacher, and we have a new technology person. So those 45-minute PODs are run specifically to look at data. The ELA and the math are also looked at on a regular basis in the morning during that common planning time that the staff members have. So you have grade levels looking at data constantly. Yes, we did take a look at the MCAS data, but that's not the only thing we look at. We look at our STAR. We look at our ACADiENTS. We look at our CBM. A lot of the things that Mrs. Pearson showed you for oral reading fluency and for, you know, whole words, we do have some students that are still working on that. We have that data that we look at, and we look at those students that are falling into the needs improvement categories. And then we parse out some of those students. And what we've done is intervening for students that are partially-meeting or not-meeting expectations. So if you look at the group of students based on MCAS doors, based on STAR assessments, based on multiple different areas that we do, we take the students who have special education services, and we make sure that they're seeing their special education teacher for small group instruction. We take the EL students, and we make sure that they're getting their 45 or their 90 minutes with their EL teachers. Then we're specifically this year looking at those students who are in the partially or not-meeting expectations. Do they go out for reading services? Make sure that they're going out every day for their 30 minutes. Now, who are the children that are left in the classroom with the teacher? And that has been our biggest focus for ELA and for math for all of our students. So the students who are receiving services outside of the classroom are getting that small group dose. Then the students that are in the classroom, we are very fortunate to implement RTI blocks for small group instruction in all grades three, four, and five. We're targeting those students who are in the classroom and are not receiving any additional services to help those children move up to meeting expectations. Doesn't mean that the other children are not getting services. We're also looking at those students who are exceeding expectations and figure out how to push those students forward and make sure that we're addressing the needs of those students as well. What we do for RTI is we have someone that comes in for 40 minutes. And in fourth grade and in fifth grade, it is specifically math. But in third grade, our RTI interventionists are coming in for ELA. I had that. The little plug came out. It's all good. In ELA, last year, I made sure the interventionists were in fourth grade because of the gaps in reading. And we know the history. If you can't read by the end of third grade, the gap gets larger. We moved it down to third grade this year based on the data and all of the work that Mrs. Pearson has put into place. So they're getting additional support in reading in third grade. We are also beginning to have an intervention being used with ZERN. It's an online platform that we have for the Department of Education through the state. And there is a tutorial program that goes along with that. So our fourth and fifth grade students in that area that we talked about are having two days of tutorial and two days of specific support in math based on the skills and the standards that they need to be addressed directly. We are also doing type of walk-to-learn model with our third grades where our math coach is going to pull students from each one of the third grades and work two to three days a week with them as well. So our third graders will be getting a double dose of ELA and math. Our fourth graders and our fifth graders will be getting math support. We use multiple benchmark testing that we talked about, ACADiENTS, CBM, STAR testing. And we have it four times a year. And we examine that data, and we see where these children and these pockets have moved to make sure that all of our students are moving from not-meeting up to meeting expectations and what things we can do specifically in ELA and specifically in math to address those concerns. We are continuing in our second year of implementing illustrative math with Fidelity. We were very, very cautious. And I think that the teachers in our school could tell you that it was a very huge undertaking to start illustrative math last year. It is a total different mindset. It's a total different program. You are letting the children aggressively struggle. And that was a huge, huge adjustment, instead of teachers standing up and teaching directly. And in year two of this, we have found some of the successes, and we've been able to tweak some of the things that we need. Some of the gaps that we found are now being addressed with that ZERN program that we talked about. So we will be implementing ZERN with our needy students who are not receiving services. We're also making sure that our EL and special education students are having small group work and using Freckle that we used last year and ZERN to address some of those. And like I said, we use our common planning time as how we begin to analyze and respond to the data on a weekly basis. So, does anybody have questions about the ATC? Questions?
Hi.
I remember that, I think you talked last year about taking kids in the first 15 minutes of school. I think you were going to do something like that.
We're still doing that.
Are you doing that?
So what happens in the first 15 minutes of school, on their POD day specifically, but in most days, is they are doing Lexia, which is our reading program that they use at the Gorman Fort Banks also. And they also do ZERN. So we have something set up when the teachers have their extended POD time, that extra 15 minutes. And that is a way for our teachers to get current and up-to-date data on those students. And we have learned report reading and looking at specific areas and being able to really drill down to say, this is a specific. this is a specific strategy that needs to be worked on.
I thought that was a great idea.
Yeah, so that is still happening, yes.
Just a quick question. I know Eileen had mentioned the ELLs. What's the count of ELLs at ATC?
I actually don't know the official count, but it's large.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Which is, which is fifty-five, no, total. But it's significantly larger than last year. Oh, probably by the.
Straight EL, not FELs.
Straight ELs is fifty-five.
And Mrs. Pearson's actually at eighty-eight as of today.
Yes. But if you look at my numbers for last year, I bet it was in the thirties. So it's, mine is significantly larger than last year.
Does the population of the schools before at the Cummings change more during the year now than it has in the past? Like, are we adding students during the year more than we've ever done before?
We've been aver- adding.
All the way up through the high school, or?
Yeah. But we have been adding an average, I would say, of, oh, anywhere from three to five students a week over the last. But at the different levels, I'm just parsing out the whole thing.
Right, absolutely.
We have, I think, close to four, close to four. When we started the school year, we had about a hundred and forty-six Ls from last year and now we're at about a hundred and ninety. So we've gone up about fifty.
And in January, we get enough of flux.
Since summer.
Yes.
That's like at the end of the school year in June, we had about a hundred and forty-six EL students. That's not including the FEL students who we're monitoring for four years. Now we have just about a hundred and ninety EL students, not including FEL students.
If you include FEL, how many do you have?
Probably somewhere around three hundred roughly.
I think you said that before, three thousand.
It's, it's getting close to, it's about ten percent, getting close to ten percent.
And the illustrative math?
Yes.
Is that just at the Cummings or does that go into Bryant?
Mr. Curly!
We started to pilot this year at sixth grade.
Yes.
And those are all consumables every year?
The workbook is consumable, but a lot of it is online and there are resources, the teacher resources online. And this ZERN, the Department of Education came up with certain programs and we got a grant, is that what we're gonna? We got a grant to use it for free this year and it has been life-changing. The way that these children are able to access. And we use it over the summer to kind of pilot it and see how we feel about it with our summer program. And the kids really enjoy it. And we get a lot of really good data from it that is driving our common planning time discussions and our instruction with students. And so what we're trying to do is align our illustrative math and our ZERN so that especially, specifically in fifth grade, some of the things aren't falling in the right order. We want to make sure that they're having the independent practice as well as the instruction with the classroom teacher. And it has been really, I would say, a good productive struggle. And I can, the math talk that we see in our classrooms right now and the way that the children can engage with one another and ask productive questions is not something we have seen in the past. We also spent quite a long time, and I think you might have referenced it, the writing piece. What we did in fifth grade specifically is we pulled all of their essays offline and we shared with the classroom teachers what a zero, a one, a two looks like and how we were able to analyze what their writing looks like and how we can improve that writing.
Thank you.
Finding area is a, I watched that this week.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Lots of interesting conversations.
It's unreal.
Lots of feedback from the kids about how to find it. Put me in my uncomfortable math space.
Mr. Curly.
So for the middle school, the presentation is set up just like Mrs. Larry. We add a lot of numbers. So if you want me to expand on anything, just feel free to just raise your hand at any point. So our current seventh grade, so our sixth graders last year scored well in ELA above the state. When I say well, forty-two percent versus forty-one percent for the state of meeting expectations and higher. The other two categories that aren't shown here are the partially meeting and not meeting expectations. Our math had a really strong year. There was a jump of forty-eight percent as a school of meeting and above versus forty-two percent. And this was before we implemented illustrative math in sixth grade. It was funny when I talked with our sixth grade teachers, they were a little hesitant because they had a strong year and they knew they had a strong year based on the data they were seeing. But after being able to observe the Cummings School in action with illustrative math, we decided to pilot with our sixth grade this year. The reason why we didn't do all three grades is it's a change in approach for students and for staff. So the students coming up knew the approach. So we wanted to make sure how we could do with our sixth grade teachers, provide them the professional development. And then by the end of the school year, we decided to make a decision if we're gonna implement that sixth, seventh, and eighth, just sixth and seventh, or if we're gonna continue with the program. The early feedback is very strong from the teachers, they love the approach, they love developing the conceptual understanding. The days of all these practice problems, things like that are kind of off to the side now where it's a lot of times that students are, you know, collaborating in class, they're having math talks, math discussions. And I think it's a game changer to increase engagement in a math classroom. So we're hoping that the feedback continues in a positive way, if we can look to expand it to seventh and eighth grade in the future. Some of the highlights and you'll see for a lot of our grades are our high need students, which makes up students with disabilities, low income students, ELs, former ELs. So for example, thirty-five percent of our high need students in grade six for ELA, their average was, well, thirty-five percent of them, I should say, scored meeting expectations or higher. At the state level, it was twenty-five percent. So you'll see a trend in a lot of our subjects and a lot of grades that our students who fall under that high needs are doing really well and excelling compared to a lot of school districts across the state. So here's just the graph in terms of it's the same, basically the same slide, we're showing a bar graph where you can see our exceeding expectations is very similar and towards the state average for ELA for grade six. Similar with our meeting. And one thing to stick out is obviously you don't want students to be in that category of not meeting expectations. But if you look at our percentage versus the state, to keep it simple, that red bar graph is a lot lower compared to the state. Obviously, your goal is to have as least amount of students as possible in that category. So successfully, we've done well there. The area we really want to focus too is that orange, that partially met. What we consider like our fence sitters. How we can get them to jump from that orange color to that green. So our teachers are trying to work very hard of looking at our internal assessments throughout the school year to see how they're progressing. Because just a few questions or understanding of standards a little bit better can make the difference of jumping from one category to the next. So now looking at math. So our exceeding expectations is very similar. But if you notice compared to the state in grade six math, we have a lot more in that green for that meeting expectations. And that red chart is a lot, is a lot smaller, which is a positive thing. So our grade six math had a really good year last year. They work very well together, they're very engaging. And I think you, that's the reason, one of the reasons why you're seeing successful results this past school year. So now our current grade eight, actually, current grade eight, so our grade seven, the big area where we struggled in the most was our ELA. Our district or our school was thirty-six percent of meeting or higher while the state was forty-one. In math, we were thirty-seven percent right along with the state. Historically in math, seventh grade's always been, it's probably the most challenging year that I've seen working in grades three to twelve, just the nature of the students. But I, the way I explain it to our staff is, everybody has seventh graders, every school, every district. So we have to find the ways to how we can keep them, when I say more engaged, providing more activities. Just because in terms of their engagement, that's the number one focus in terms of them in the classroom, them being engaged. This was our, in terms of the state with our math, typically we've always been a couple percentage points higher. So I was, I was excited to see that we're in the state average with our grade seven math. ELA, we weren't obviously happy with. We had some teachers that were new to teaching grade seven and whatnot. So we put in a model this year with our grade seven to have some more coaching for them, to help them along. And if you look to the right for highlights, high need students, we have a higher percentage in terms of ELA of, compared to the state. And for math, if you look at it, twenty-four percent of our high needs in math compared to twenty percent of the state, they did better. Our SGP was fifty-nine. I'll talk about SGP in more detail, but to kind of keep it simply is, every grade level, every subject gets SGP of zero to a hundred, right? In terms of how you grow to how students score compared to other students in the state with a similar score. To me, I always look at fifty is the mark you want to at least be at and the goal is to be as high as you can because your students are making growth compared to others. But I'll definitely discuss that later on. Twenty-eight percent of our low income students scored at meeting or higher versus nineteen percent of the state. So again, very similar to the last couple slides. Our students that are considered high needs, students with disabilities, low income, ELs, did very well last year. And here's a bar graph. So obviously I mentioned we struggled with ELA. We had a zero percentage, I think we had one student, so that one student couldn't, couldn't make up that, that percentage point. So like I said, there's a heavy focus in grade seven in terms of teaching to the standards, coaching the teachers and things like that. And I'll talk about the plan that we have in place later on. And again, very similar, but not as a big discrepancy. But if you look at the column in the red, the not meeting expectations, it's slightly lower than the state, which is a good thing. However, in most of our subjects and grade levels, typically it's more in a positive manner. So our goal is to really focus on our grade seven ELA, it's a combination of things. The stole students are now in grade eight, maybe they've historically struggled with ELA. So we try to do is share the data with our eighth grade staff, they identify the weaknesses. And then grade seven looks at in terms of what they can do better to teach some of those standards. All right, and here's our math for grade seven last year. Pretty much, for the most part, pretty equivalent to the state. And again, if you look at that red category, the not meeting expectations, we're doing a better job compared to most in terms of making sure that they're at least partially meeting expectations. But ultimately, our goal is we want to start swinging those percentages more towards green and more towards red is the ultimate goal over time. Current ninth grade, so our eighth graders. So we had a very strong year in eighth grade ELA. We had fifty-three percent of our students at meeting expectations are higher versus forty-two percent of the state. Math, it shows thirty-four percent compared to thirty-six percent for the state. However, there'll be a slide later on that shows that our average scores across the board are doing very well in, in math. The issue we run into is that orange bar graph. Those students that are partially meeting, we have such a large amount of students and the goal is to move them into that green category so they're meeting expectations. Science, it looks a little deceiving there, being thirty-three percent. Something over the years we've struggled with in science of trying to teach the standards in sixth, seventh, and eighth where our curriculum is grade-based. I think it was two thousand and sixteen, the science standards changed and there's a lot more spiraling back. So one of our struggles is taking our program that we purchased right before two thousand and sixteen and basically adjusting it to reach the standards. But you'll see later on that that percentage looks lower, but in terms of overall achievement, we're exactly even with the state. So if you take a peek at the highlights, forty-five percent of our students for high needs in ELA scored meeting or higher when at the state level it was only twenty-four percent. So in ELA, our high need students, they crushed it across the board, which is great to see. And in math, twenty-seven percent of our high needs did really well versus nineteen percent in the state. So again, common theme, our high need students are doing very well, or they did very well last year at the middle school. And here's the same bar graph that you've seen before, it just breaks down the different percentages. So the ultimate goal is to continue to try to move from the orange to the green and the green to the blue. We worked very hard at the middle school looking at data, not just with MCAS, but our internal assessments. Because MCAS is a snapshot. And there obviously are some outliers, it's a, you know, a test over, say, a two-day span. So some kids might not test well, but that happens everywhere. So you always have your outliers. But for the most part, it's a pretty good barometer in terms of how the students are doing, how they're assessing on the state standards. But again, we try to use our internal assessments as well in terms of the day-to-day of improving our instruction in the classroom. And here's a snapshot of the math. And again, very similar, if you look at the red for the not meeting, we have less students in that category versus the state. And the goal is to try to, again, move from partially meeting to meeting and then hopefully into the exceeding category. And science, again, don't want to, you know, dwell too much on the data. So this is an area where we want to, again, move from the orange to the green. And if you look at that red in terms of not meaning expectations, and again, it's a common theme at the middle school where our goal is to move students from, from the right categories to the left. So now here's a snapshot that you can get from the Department of Education where it's on the district profiles. So Laura, if you can scroll to the right a little bit.
Good thing I have a touchscreen.
Yeah, that works. So if you look at, and I might stand up because the font is kind of small. So we discussed the meeting expectations categories, but the biggest things I like to look at is where it says the average SGP and the achieving percentiles. So as I mentioned, that average student growth percentile is how do students, or how's your grade doing versus how they did last year compared to other schools. If you look at our average SGPs, we're fifty and above in everything except for grade seven ELA, which was a SGP of forty. It's not great, it's still considered typical growth, but it's on the lower end. And we've had some, this past year, we had some of our highest growths in mathematics. So for the grade six math, we were sixty-one, grade seven fifty-nine SGP, and then grade eight was fifty-one. Where historically in years past, math was sometimes a struggle in terms of compared to the state. And I think we've made a lot of gains in recent years and the goal is to keep pushing in the right direction. Now, take away the SGP, take away expectations. A couple of years ago, the state put in the achieving percentiles. So where does the middle school rank versus other schools? Take away growth, how do our students score? So for example, very similar SGP from a scale to zero to a hundred. If there were a hundred schools and our achieving percentile was sixty, we were ranked sixtieth in terms of how we're achieving with a hundred being the highest. So if you look, if you look at those achieving percentiles, in grade six ELA we are sixty, grade six math sixty-six. Grade seven, we mentioned was an area that we're working on, was forty-two. Grade seven math sixty-three, grade eight sixty-nine, sixty-three, science is fifty-one. So even though in previous slides, science didn't look like it scored that well, it's still above the state average collectively. We mentioned MCAS is just one assessment, but it, it gives you really, really strong data. So Laura, if you can scroll up and off to the left, there's a little tab that says item analysis. Item in here, right there. So we get this data, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. It'll come up in a second, usually it's a little slow. Oh, click on like grades, one of the subjects on the left.
What grade?
You can do grade six math, I guess. So just giving you an example, if you slide down a little bit lower. So in June, now that MCAS, the last few years have been on the computers, so before the kids leave, we get how our school did on every question versus the state. So what we do is, this data gets shared away, right away with our lead teachers. And what they do is they start working over the summer to develop plans about how we can make changes. Because if we're scoring well below on certain questions versus the state, we know that's something we're not doing a strong enough job in the classroom. The areas that we're doing well in, we keep doing what we're doing. We try to identify the areas we're struggling. And what happens with this report, there's something that we can access on our own end that we can break down all those questions by standard, can address in terms of certain specific standards where this is more skill-based. And our teachers try to put together a plan to improve these areas for next school year. And the teachers who are getting the students, they have a good idea of where the students' strengths and weaknesses are as a whole. We also provide them individual data and whatnot. So again, at some point, if you ever want to look at in terms of, you know, breaking down per questions, which is what we do at school, this report is, is pretty strong. Then in terms of how we're gonna use the data. So, I want to say for the past few years, one of our biggest pushes has been trying to get an ELA math coach at the middle school. This is the first year we were able to have an ELA math coach. So, Mr. Kirby and Mrs. Carsley, I reached out to them when I found out they were retiring. And I tried to kind of set the groundwork, and Lisa and Laura were fantastic in dealing with my many texts and emails asking of trying to get them to stay on as part-time coaches. Sometimes a teacher might want to stay on, you know, to make more money, but for them it's not about that. In their last year of teaching, they had the two highest growths in our building. So next year, not having those scores in the classroom, there could be a reflection on it. But to have them in these roles as part-time coaches, I'm hoping, hoping it's gonna help us as a school and whatnot. They work with us three days a week. They're in, on Mondays, they work with our teachers in common planning time, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. They're pushing into classrooms, especially classrooms that may need some extra support. They'll, they'll pull some small groups, not a formal RTI program, but again, providing some small group support in there. What we're also doing is identifying standards. And when I showed you that last chart by question, is every year, whether it's MCAS, internal assessments, we try to look at the data as much as we can. But the teachers do a really good job of kind of going through that, understanding like, all right, here's the data and here's a middle school student. And trying to find that right balance to, you know, obviously, you know, push the instruction, but understanding that, you know- but understanding that, you know what, grade six, seven, eight students, sometimes a little bit different. And from one day to the next, that's why it's important to have more opportunities in school. I'm meeting with Laurie on Wednesday to hopefully some grant funding for some more activities is the plan. Because we realize the more we can offer at the middle school, the better off our kids will be. And again, if that happens, I think the results show. And then obviously, it improves their overall learning experience at the middle school. And again, we continue to monitor student attendance, especially post-COVID. Again, we use our data to drive instruction. We spent a lot of time last year to accelerate our learning. Department of Education suggested it. We use our ICE block as extra time on math, reading, science, things like that. But also providing some SEL opportunities, team time for our kids, and it was really beneficial. And each year, we try to tweak that model a little bit because it might look different for a sixth grader than it does for an eighth grader. And we try to trust our teachers who work super hard. They had a great year last year. And again, students come up from the Fort Banks and the coming school, and we know they're prepared. And you know, it's a K to twelve approach. So when we have strong scores, obviously we want to celebrate it, you know, with our entire team. And in terms of overall scores, this is probably one of our stronger years since I've joined the middle school. So our staff was very proud. Any questions?
Okay, first of all, I mean, good luck junior high. But I love the idea of using the questions. I mean, that's really very, that gets down to the ground level. Have you noticed a change in the teacher's ability to use online learning?
I would say even pre-COVID, our students, you know, I mean, our staff had a, they're very strong with technology.
Yeah.
And I think they improved those skills during learning from home, whether it was remote or hybrid. And they continue to use these platforms, not to, their main goal is in terms of like assessing students and whatnot, because you've seen a change in education in the last five to ten years, where teachers spend more time planning versus correcting, things like that. Where they use the online platform more to review student results, student data, and use that to kind of drive their lessons, you know, whether it's for the rest of the unit, the next day, things like that. So that's what predominantly we use the online platforms for.
It can be personalized so much better online. And that's, and I, I think that that is, if anything, hopefully COVID drove more of our teachers to really appreciate the benefits of online learning.
Like for math, we use iXL, which is standard and skill based. And for ELA, we use predominantly Common Lit. And again, those can be structured to the students' needs based on how they assess in reading levels and math levels and things like that. So they're super helpful.
Just a quick thing, looking at results from fifth grade, let's say, and eighth grade. And it's kind of funny to me, you're looking at, they're two of the biggest grade levels we have in terms of numbers, right? It's like a hundred and forty something, a hundred and fifty something. And now you talk about the different subgroups and stuff. So the percentages are less, which helps the scores, I think. So it's, you know, I, I think there's definitely a relation between the class size and the scores average across the state. And it would be interesting to see different subset percentages throughout the state to compare the scores to. Because it's, in some respects, it's apples to apples. In some respects, it isn't. It depends on the size of the subgroups.
And there's a, Jimmy, there's, Mr. Littner, there's a report that Department of Education will provide you, like a data analysis, that compares you to schools of the same, similar size, and same in terms of like high needs, students with disabilities. And you can kind of use that to see how you compare to make it more apples to apples. I had a chance recently to look at those, and they were very comparable. Some scores are doing better than it, some schools, and some schools, you know, were slightly below. So that's a nice way to kind of compare in terms of school size and different population.
Thanks, Brian.
At the high school, I'm definitely the benefit beneficiary of this incredible instructional leadership that happens at the lower levels. I'm wowed by everyone's presentations and their attentions to detail. You can see what goes into creating a high school student. And when they get to us, a lot of the work is already done, so I'm always appreciative of that. And, you know, I want to, as I go through my presentation tonight, I'll try to be a little bit quick, because we've been here a long time, but also because they've laid the groundwork for me to do this presentation. When our data is good, it's because of them, and when our data is not good. Yes, that's true. So this year, go to our next, first slide. So the, the big picture of the data at the high school is that historically, since I've been here, our math and ELA and science numbers have, generally speaking, have been above the state level. And our recent data is showing that we're just slightly below the state level across the board. And so a lot of my slides mirror the same, the slides that Mr. Curly showed you. So I'll pull up the charts in a minute. But in ELA, we had fifty-four percent of our students meeting or exceeding expectations as opposed to fifty-eight percent for the state. Math, eight percent below the state level, and science, five percent below the state level. Some of the highlights that I would like to point out, though, is that our twenty-four percent of our ELL and former EL students were meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA compared to twenty-one percent in the state. And twenty-four percent of our students with disabilities were meeting or exceeding expectations in science compared to fifty percent of the state. Our math achievement percentile, which is our average scaled score, was above the state average this past year. And our average student growth percentile was in the typical growth range for both math and ELA. We've certainly talked a lot about growth today. And while that is something that I want to highlight, our goal for growth is always to be in the next range, which is significant growth. This is our, a representation of our ELA scores for our current eleventh grade students who took it last year in grade ten. It is important for me to mention that before we went into the school year last year, these grade ten students that took the MCAS, it had been a couple of years since they had been assessed, formally assessed with the MCAS in the standard school setting. So we are right on basically a mirror image of the state with a few, a few different differences in percentiles and a few different categories, but pretty much a mirror image of them, of the state. Now, you know, like Mr. Curly said, our goal is to always move people from one category to the next. In ELA, we had more students not meeting expectations than the state average. So that's something that certainly sticks out to us that we want to be focusing on. And we're a little bit lower than the state in terms of the percent of our student, percentile of our students that are exceeding expectations. This is a snapshot of our math. Again, more students in the, in the, in the exceeding expectations range at the state, in terms of the state data, and for meeting expectations. And we just, we had more students in the partially meeting expectations column and the not meeting expectations for math. Again, over the years, our data for math and English and science trends to, to be, tends to be more above the state average. And this year, we're kind of, we're right there. Another picture, something that definitely pops out as a concern for us is that there's only three students, three percent of our students who are exceeding expectations in science, but that was biology, which our freshmen took last year, so these are our current tenth graders. Our response to our data, so, you know, in looking at our data across the board, it's always important for us to identify grade level standards for math and ELA that our students didn't not master and use those, those standards as a discussion points and break them down in our, in our department meetings and use that data to drive our instruction and accelerate our learning. Brian, Brian's, when he pulled up the, the breakdown of data that's available on, on the website, that's, that's a process that we use also at the high school to go through and look at the standards where we, our students are successful and reflect on that, and then find some of the standards where we're falling behind a little bit and make that the focus for the upcoming school year. That's continuous work that happens at the high school. And we're obviously, that's into our next goal, we're always wanting student growth throughout the school year by using our MCAS practice assessments and looking at the individual standards within that, those, those assessments as well as our internal assessments. We're going to be identifying students that are in need of additional support and offer them our MCAS prep courses this year. Monitoring student attendance is something that is critical to our success. Like Mrs. Pearson said, we need our students to be in the classroom to receive the instruction that we're providing. Our chronic absenteeism is up about ten percent since pre-COVID. And so that was an issue for us last year. I think at about twenty-six percent, Ms. Powell, to answer your question you asked. We're always aiming to have lower class sizes at the ninth grade level in math, ELA, and biology as a way to deliver the, deliver instructions to students in a smaller group setting and continue to offer co-taught classes for math, ELA, and science in grades nine and ten to support our higher need students. And those are things that we have currently have in place for this school year. One of the other responses, or one of the other, I guess, factors that go into, I think, improving our schoolers this year is, for next year, is going to be the ongoing curriculum work that we have going on at the high school. And that has been something that we have been working on for a few years, but we have really, we're on the verge of completing this year. And I think our students are going to be, have the benefit of that redesigned curriculum, the work that's been done, the conversations that's happened within our departments to bring more thoughtful instruction to the kids, the students in our classes. And so I anticipate that that's going to be a huge factor in improving some of our schoolers next year to get us back to a place where we were pre-COVID. And I did want to take the opportunity I was here to break out some of our advanced placement scores. I know I'm getting a little bit off the MCAS track, but I know that's something that we had talked about earlier the last time I was here, that I would bring some, some scores to you. For those that don't know, for students that take AP courses at the end of the, the school year, they take the AP test. The scores come in, they're between a one and five. A three is considered passing, a three or above is considered passing. And passing allows them to, to not have to take whatever that course is in college in place of, they don't, they, they don't have to take that course. So we offer a lot of AP courses at Winter High School. And as you can see, I'm not going to read everything, go one, one to you, because I have another page here that will highlight these, some, some certain areas. But any, and in any class, we have the average score that's above a three, that's obviously very good. That means most of the kids are passing our AP exams and receiving the benefits of that when they go to college. In terms of any, with AP scores, any time that you're at or around the state or global average, I think that that's, it's a little different from MCAS. I think that's actually exceptional. There's a lot of different schools in the Commonwealth and as well as the country that offer AP courses. And a lot of those schools have different criteria for entrance into those courses than we do. We have some AP, AP courses, we have a lot of conceiving AP courses, we have some large class sizes in our AP classrooms. We have a lot of different types of learners taking AP courses. So for us to be up there, and in some instances above the state or the global average, I think is very impressive. Some of the highlights of our AP scores. In calculus A B, our scores are similar to both, we're right on par with both state and the global average. Our English literature and comp scores were close to the state average and above the global average. In US history, our scores were similar to both the state and the global average. And seventy percent of our AP biology students earned a passing score or above, which is a very high, high percentage. And eighty-five point seven percent of our English lit and comp students earned a passing score of three or above for last year. So in terms of, you know, our AP scores and our MCAS scores, I think it was, it's, to reiterate what Mrs. Pearson was talking about when she first sat down here, we're still feeling the effects of our students being absent from school, participating in remote, remote learning. And while our data has changed since pre-COVID, I am very proud to, to sit here and talk about these scores as they relate to what everyone's been through over the last couple of years. At Winter High School, we've had issues with chronic absenteeism, we've had some teacher turnover. We've all went, we all went through COVID together, and that has led to a lot of inconsistencies in instruction. And for me to be sitting here with a lot of positives in our AP scores and our MCAS scores that are hovering at the state average is a win for us. I obviously want them to be better. And I think when I sit here next year, we're going to be in a much better place. But it's been a lot of, a lot of work, hard work from our teachers and our students to get, just to maintain where we are. And I don't want to, I don't want that to be lost on, on anyone as we look at, we like get really into the numbers, that this is what our situation is. So I think that's it.
I know this has all been comparison, comparing our data to the state. But I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to take some cities that are kind of like us and have higher scores than we do, and specifically in depth, and give them a call and see if we couldn't, couldn't see what they're doing, that it may be different than we're doing, or maybe they're doing the same thing, and maybe we don't have anybody in the whole state that looks at, like us. But it, I'm not talking about overall, I'm talking about taking, you know, maybe, maybe math. There may be some cities that are many like, many like, and maybe you do this, I don't know. It's just a thought.
Yeah, that's something that we do look into as a district and certainly as a team at the high school. I can tell you that a lot of resources are a big difference, just in terms of funding and class size. You know, that's like where everyone goes if you're, you know, if you're looking to accelerate instruction. The, the, the smaller the class sizes, sometimes the better. And then, and then, you know, another thing that, you know, one of the other, like Mr. Curly said, just generally speaking, the amount of activities and things that we have that engage all of our students and bring them into our school community and make them feel, you know, create a learning environment for them to be successful. A lot of it comes down to that. And then, you know, a couple of years ago, before we started this curriculum work, I would say that that would be, you know, that was an area of need for us. And so I feel like we've made a lot of progress towards that. And I know that some of the schools that do well in the MCAS have that solid curriculum foundation.
I know you were working on getting your curriculum written.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
I feel like I have to ask you one, since I guess.
And before, and before you do, just so you know, I know that the, the AP scores that we talked about today, there's a lot of, there's a lot to talk about, and there's a lot of different ways to break down that data. I didn't want to go, knowing that I, I come last year and it's been a long night, I didn't want to necessarily go there. But if, if moving forward, if people want to talk more about our AP program at Winter High School and what those numbers look like and the work that we're doing at the school, I can come in and do that again. So I just want to make sure I didn't have to.
Well, I was going to talk about AP. I'll ask you a quick question because it's getting late and I keep looking at that clock. So I got an hour, I guess, to talk. No, just on the AP, you, you made a really good point about, you know, because you look at, I didn't think the scores were really good, but when you look at them, if you go back, and I'd love to have a copy of that slide. But when you go back and you say, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but the, the class sizes are probably much higher than they should be, or could be, or whatever. But then where do you put that fifteen or twenty kids or whatever, maybe? I mean, I'd like to see an AP class size of nine, you know, high single digits or low double digits, right? So that attributes to a lot of this. And, and I think the other thing that we do doing with it is, and this comes from the Fasella money too, that anybody who's in an AP course and is committed to take that AP test, and they're very fortunate enough that some of the Fasella money goes to kind of pay for some of that cost, not all of it, but there's a certain percentage of the Fasella money that goes, which is a great opportunity for the kids to be able to, to have that. But it would be great to try to see, you know, because you look at the calculus. BC, I think that's amazing. Now, again, is there only two kids in that, one kid took the test? Right. So numbers can do a lot of strange things. If you say one kid took a test, got a 4.5.
Right.
And that's, but that's, and I'm not saying we should have one kid in the class, but that's what could be done if the numbers are lower, not 4.5, because that's incredible. That's really, really good. But when you look at the number of kids taking the different courses, like that's a huge part of it, a huge piece of it, but something that, you know, and again, money solves all the problems, right? If somebody hits the power ball tonight, then we could have all this stuff, but, but I think it's, you know, it would be a goal of mine to try to see those classes at lower numbers that would reflect the, the true potential of the system. Because they, you know, they go in through a great system and then, you know, it, the individual scores might show well on, on some level, but when you compile them as a, you know, to try to get a school profile that's going to colleges and stuff, it, it's, you know, it's different. But, but anyway, I, I think you made a really good point with the number of kids in a class that will have a huge impact on AP.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that we like to, you know, kind of magnify for everyone is the fact that we have a lot of kids taking the courses and there's access for everyone. And the, the point you made about, you know, a, a barrier for some kids is the, is the fee to take the test. We're lucky enough that that is offset by the facella. But, you know, our, our, kind of our general philosophy at, at Winter High School among the AP teachers has always been to, to bring on a little bit more and give them that AP experience and rigor and understanding that when we do that, we've reset, we might sacrifice a little bit on the, on what the numbers look like. But that's where we've chosen to kind of put our, our focus. I'd like to see smaller class sizes, but still have the same amount of kids taking the courses. That would be perfect.
Right.
So, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say thank you all for coming? I know this has been a long meeting and that was a lot of data and, and also, just please know that we all know that test scores are not the only metric of an, of an education and, you know, the feeling of those schools, you know, I just, I really appreciate the work that you all are doing, that your teachers are doing, that the career professionals are doing, you know, I, I, I know this is sometimes hard probably to present some of this data. It's not anywhere near necessarily what we want to see in some cases, but know that we know how hard you're working and how hard the students are working and, and thank you. Just thank you for coming.
All right, I would suggest that you maybe not stick around for the budgetary end of this unless you feel the need to, so that you can get here on time tomorrow morning in a few hours. That would be helpful.
Do I get Mrs. Pearson's funds if I stay?
Yeah, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Green button, green button.
We didn't learn that. Really second.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 7?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Letery, second by, oh, I heard Ms. Petry. Sorry. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SPW 23-7 in the amount of $258,134.57.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Swope. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes. Under buildings and grounds, we have, and.
Two payrolls.
Two payrolls.
Yes, two payrolls, yeah.
We have two payrolls.
Yes.
Payroll warrant SPW 23-08 in the amount of $827,086.43. May I have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Leonard. Do I have any discussion?
There could be an O eight and O nine that were sent over. Do I have here?
Yeah, she's doing the first one, yeah.
The first one was.
Yeah, we're doing the first one.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did SPW seven.
That's a vendor warrant.
That's a vendor warrant.
Twenty-three, seven, half.
You're right.
Was O nine, I don't see it on.
I only have one payroll.
There's one right here, if you want to read that.
There's O eight and O nine.
Two in the packet, because I, I printed two in the packet.
So you do, you, you have O eight and you already have a, a motion and a second.
Okay, so can I have a roll call on, on?
For O eight?
O eight, yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Okay, now may I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 23-09 in the amount of $828,313.8.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second. Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Okay, now may I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 23-09 in the amount of $828,313.8.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second. Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Okay. Under buildings and grounds, we have a request to use the Arthur T. Cummings and PTO for their meetings. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Let, Mr. Letery, second by Ms. Swope. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Yes. We also have a request by the Boston Taekwondo to use the schools for their belt ceremony.
Didn't get the paperwork in on time, so we'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay, we will push that off. We have no subcommittee reports, do we have a superintendent report?
Just one item on the superintendent report, and I would like to address the, the full committee with this. As you are aware from tonight's public comment as well as the emails received by the committee from some of our families, there was a concern raised relative to the book, a book or books that are in, present in our K-2 classrooms at the Gorman Fort Bank School in the classroom libraries. You may recall that during the 2021 school year, we began a review process that included the evaluating of the diversity of the materials that we have in our school district. The New York University rubric was the one that we had used. So we looked at the diversity of the materials and supplies at some grade levels and curriculum at other grade levels that we are using with our students, K through 12. Our goal was and remains the focus on ensuring that we have classrooms and schools that are inclusive and represent all of the students and families of the Winter Public Schools. As a public school, as you know, we have the responsibility to assemble collections of materials, including non-instructional supplies and materials, things like books, toys, pictures of students, artifacts on our walls, various authors, that represent all people, every student, and even a bigger responsibility to embrace the diversity among us. Allowing children of all ages to see a reflection of themselves and of their families in our classroom provides support and allows our students to feel included, accepted, valued, and safe. At the K-2 level in, in 20 and 21 and continuing as we move forward, we focused on our classroom libraries and the books that we currently had in place for our students to access as non-instructional, high-interest level reading options to support the independent reading levels of our students as well as their literary, literary growth. Our teachers reviewed these materials that we had and recommended several grade-appropriate, high-interest books that expanded the authors, the characters, and the subjects, and we are, and we decided to update the offerings of those books to ensure that they were representative of the students attending our schools in the moment. These additional books were added to individual classrooms for access by students if they chose to read them. And we're also, we also offer those books in our classroom libraries to any of our families who express interest and would like to borrow those books to read themselves or to read with their students or families. Expanding our resources reflects the students present in our school community, and by the way, this is not a new concept for us, and it remains an ongoing practice of the public school and public schools across the Commonwealth. We believe that additional resources should be viewed as an asset to learning and a provision to support, of support to those who choose to use them. We continue to invite parents to reach out to us directly if there is a question or a concern regarding any aspect of the teaching and learning that occurs within the walls of our school and beyond. Communication is extremely important to us, and it is the key to building and maintaining trust with our families, and we hope that you will continue to rely on us to provide you with information and allow us to listen to your concerns. Couple more quick, little, small items, a shout out to the Trunk a Treat folks, it was an excellent and well-attended activity. A big thank you to the ATC and the GFB PTOs as well as all of the community members and businesses who, who volunteered time and donated materials, especially candy, including ring pops, which is a new fan favorite for my granddaughter, and the combined effort to offer such a fun experience to our students and families. There were over 795 families who participated, students as well. Now, just a quick reminder that there's no school tomorrow for students, as teachers will be participating in a full day of professional development. This is our five-district partnership where we continue to collaborate with other school dif- districts with our focus on equity, so, social-emotional learning strategies for ELL, BEL learners and other diverse learners, and wellness for our students and teachers. And a reminder that November 11th is a no-school, all schools, I always wanted to say that, no schools, all schools, day for our staff and students in observation of Veterans Day. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not.
Do we have any appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leaves of absence?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we have public relations.
We do. Congratulations to the varsity cheerleaders who came in first place at the Austin Prep Invitational in the Division Three, Three and Four Division. Congratulations to the October Athletes of the Month, Nico Beibin for golf, Hannah Parker for soc- for soccer, Hannah Essai-Ubi for volleyball. Congratulations to the Scholars of the Month, Denise Rodriguez, Manua, who's a sophomore, and Matthew Tehan, who's a junior. Picture of the Week, it's important to note that the Commissioner's Weekly Update of October 17th to the 21st featured the students at the ATC celebrating Kindness Week, which was all about just being a good human and kind to others. I had the opportunity to walk with the students on that, and the students took a picture out here, and it was a ton of fun. It's always good to get a pat in the back from the Department of Education, not that we need it, but it was nice to be highlighted by them. Drama Society is performing The Wizard of Oz on November 12th at 2:00 and 7:00 PM and November 13th at 2:00. It's, cost for tickets is $10 for students or seniors, $15 for adults, and they can be purchased online. Class of 2023 continues to run their Sneaker fundraiser, that's ending on the 30th. You can drop off your gently used shoes at the high school. Middle School Council is running Food Wars beginning Monday, November 14th through Friday, the 18th. They'll be collecting non-perishable items to help local families during the holiday season. Winter Middle School Student Council is having a bake sale on Saturday, the 19th down the center. All money raised will go towards helping students and families of need during the holidays. Class of 2023 Annual Thanksgiving Fundraiser, Spinelli's Pies. Pickup and delivery is Tuesday, November 22nd. Pies are $20. They accept cash or Venmo, and you can contact the high school or our class advisor, Mariana Beibin or Rachel Del Solio. These are all on the school's website. Winter Second Annual Pumpkin Drop is Saturday, November 19th from 10:00 to 1:00 at Overlook Hill, which otherwise known as Overlook Drive, the Fort Banks Playground on Kennedy Drive. Reduce waste and send your pumpkins to the compost. I'd like to shout out to the Zonta Club of Chelsea and the North Shore Group for their generous dosa, donation of Market Basket gift cards for our families. I look forward to seeing those ladies every year. They are a nice group of ladies that show up and knock on my door unexpectedly and spend a good 10 minutes having conversation with me, and we're grateful for what they drop off. Public Health Department's offering COVID-19 booster shots for all ages on Tuesday from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Winter Health Department, 45 Pauline Street. You can call 617-539-5839 if you would like to register. And, whoo, that might be it. Trying to bust through that, and hopefully people are paying attention. This may be the longest school committee meeting of my career, which I, you know, I like to point out, not that I'm competitive, but I like to put out, I do like to put them out. Maybe not as long as the longest town council meeting, I'm probably.
And that was all I have. Any other public relations?
I, I would just like to encourage people to vote tomorrow. Precinct Four will be voting at Kennedy Drive at the, yeah, at Golden Drive, I'm sorry.